Good. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call today's adjourned regular meeting for Monday, June 13th. To order, roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Here.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Here.
Councilmember Bates?
Here.
Councilmember Chirko?
Here.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Here.
Great, and can you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Nofolda will be leading us in that, followed by Councilmember Chirko for the invocation.
If you can face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to start by giving thanks for all we have, for the opportunity we have to represent our great city, for the love in our community. Whatever one's opinions, political viewpoint and faith, we're all part of the same community and work together to keep our community safe, prosperous and loving. I want to specifically give thanks to our first responders, including the Los Alp D. They risked their lives to keep all of us safe and to help us feel safe. And I'd like to also give thanks to the volunteers in our community as well. And I'd like to thank my colleagues in the City Council for acting in what we all believe is the best interest of our community. Thank you.
And Council, can you join me down front for a couple of presentations?
Sure.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one, can I get the Parks and Recreation Commission to come on up? Yay. All right, July is celebrated across the nation as Park and Recreation Month. The residents of Los Alamos, including children, youth, families, adults, senior, businesses, community organizations and visitors benefit from the wide range of parks, sports fields, tennis courts, facility, arts and programs, including Coyote Creek Park, Little Cottonwood Park, Laurel Park, Orville Lewis Park, Weekend of Art, Race Los Al, Spring Carnival, Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular, Trunk or Treat, Winter Wonderland, preschool program, day camp, park programs, senior programs, youth sports, adult sports, classes and so much more provided by the City of Los Alamos. You guys been busy. The Los Alamos City Council urges all its residents to recognize that parks and recreation enriches the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the community homes and neighborhoods. We hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month throughout the City of Los Alamos. And I've always said about our Parks and Rec staff and commission, you guys are the memory makers. My kids talk about the park stuff, not about the street stuff. So, good job, thanks for the memories. So, we'll go ahead and grab a picture. Would you like to?
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. The Parks Recreation Department does an amazing job making sure that there's always something new and exciting going on in our, in our community, but especially during those summer months and especially in July. We like to also point out our pop-up dog park at Laurel Park, our park fitness takeover, art workshop and flower seed giveaway, pop-up park, mini family day with concerts in the park and a free pickup of sports all month long for basketball and volleyball. And all of this on the back of the brochure that's out. I'm sure you've all received it. So, without further ado, thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak? You don't speak? Go for it.
Yes, just wanna thank the staff, Parks and Recreation staff. They are phenomenal, they do such a great job. Makes our job kinda difficult to give good advice to them. They think of everything and they just really help create community cohesion, which is what we're striving for. So, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Are you gonna be shy?
Okay.
Hi, I just wanna say, one of the reasons I joined the Commission for Parks and Rec is I was a single mother for several years and the park was the best activity for my daughter. She really thrived there and so that is one of the reasons I joined. And it has been truly amazing, especially with working with Emmeline and such a great staff that she has with her. And also good old Ron, he left us, but it's okay. You know, just wanna say thank you and to the City Council. I mean, you guys have been amazing, cuz you guys put through so much that we, we like and we agree on. So, thank you guys very much.
All right, I would ask if Fire Captain Lee Cabrera could come on up. The man of the hour. Fire Captain Paramedic Lee Cabrera has been selected as the Orange County Fire Authority's Battalion One Firefighter of the Year for two years in a row, overachiever. The year, the year processes involves a firefighter being nominated by their peers and coworkers, then voted on by a committee also comprised of their peers. Captain Cabrera is currently assigned to Fire Station 66 in the City of Westminster. Lee is a member of both OCFA Peer Support Program and Critical Incident Stress Debrief Team. He has consistently assisted his fellow firefighters, acting as an advocate, a confident and a supportive member to anyone who asks for it. Captain Cabrera is a well-respected captain among his fellow company officers, his subordinates and his supervisors. He regularly mentors and trains probationary firefighters and paramedic students, continuing to lead by example in all that he does. We are very, very proud to recognize Fire Captain Paramedic Lee Cabrera as OCFA Battalion One Firefighter of the Year. You want, you want this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Hasselbrink and Councilmembers. Very honored and humbled to receive this award. Definitely didn't do any of this on my own. Worked with some amazing individuals within the organization that definitely had a hand in this and every project that I'm involved in. I shared this award with them, so behalf, on behalf of the men and women of the organization, members of Local 3631, thank you for this recognition.
At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. And I have one blue sheet. Ms. Marilyn Poe, come on up.
Yes, I am standing up. Mayor Hasselbrink and members of the council, thank you so much. I'm gonna speak just a little bit about St. Isidore Historical Plaza. The organization started in 1999 when the St. Isidore Catholic Church was closed by the Orange Diocese. This organization has worked tirelessly to do whatever it would take to keep the building, which is the oldest community building of the original Main Street in Los Alamos. We finally were able to purchase the building in 2014. And that gave us the ability then to seek historical, state and federal designation. And on February the 11th of this year, we were granted that designation. So, that does open the door for us to be able to seek grants to restore the building. It needs a lot of repair, but more than that, we have become a community center. We provide a lot of services to the community from the plaza. We have AA meetings every morning, on Sunday evening, on Saturday evening. We have a food and clothing distribution the second and third Saturday of each month. We have Kiwanis meeting there. We have the Ollie Programs meeting at St. Isidore. So, it really has become a community center. So, on, on the 25th of this month, and I hope you all got your invitations, we are going to celebrate with one hour in the chapel at 2:00 and then we're going to have an open house for the rest of the afternoon. So, we'd like everyone in the community to come and support us and just really get to know what happens at St. Isidore. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do I have anybody else for public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council and we'll start with Councilmember Chirko.
Sounds good. Last week, I was, I was able to attend Chief Claiborne's swearing-in ceremony at the base. It was really impressive. It sounds like there were about 250 people there, so I don't know how he bribed them or what he gave them to get that many people to show up. But I think it's a testament to the relationships he's created and the impressions he's left in other agencies, including Santa Ana and Los Angeles, where he previously worked, and the impression that he's already leaving within our community, that so many people from our community also showed up. So, congratulations, it was a really nice event. Your lovely family was there as well. I also got to go see the Los Alp D practice with the Los Alamos High School Football Team. The PD did a respectable job. I mean, they, you know, those, those, those kids are really incredible athletes. I mean, just the size, the speed, the strength. And Chief even got a touchdown against them, although I think maybe they were being weighted down or something. What was that?
Fifth string defense.
Fifth string defense, okay. All right, well, that was still, still really cool. And another example of the Chief and the PD getting out in the community and showing them that they're, they're really truly a part of the community and again, reminding people that the PD is one of the reasons why we love living in Los Alamos. So, thank you for that. Got to meet with City Manager Simmons. We talked about some plans for the city, budgeting and some of the stuff we're talking about tonight on the agenda. And looking forward to coffee with the cop this Thursday, I think, at the, is it at the Starbucks again? No. Donut Hut. It's at Donut Hut on Cotella. And the upcoming summer concert series as well, which I don't know if Emmeline plans on talking about that later. Okay, I'll leave that for you then. Thank you.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on what Councilman Chirko said. I was really impressed when, when they first announced you as our police chief. But after seeing all the support that you have and just a great family, I'm even more impressed. So, that, that was awesome. And I just wanna encourage people, I know my wife and I, we always have a hard time figuring out what we're gonna do with our kids for the summer. We always forget sometimes, you know, that the city offers a lot of great programs. So, just wanna encourage people to look into what the city offers. And I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to the concert series and things like that, so, thanks.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Bates?
Sure.
Again, Chief, congratulations. That was quite a ceremony. I know we had the county sheriff, who was in the process of being elected that day for another term of right behind us and acknowledging your achievements. And, and that is great. I mean, the fact that you had that interface with the county, with the sheriff, that he's gonna show up to your swearing-in ceremony, that's impressive, so congratulations. A couple of things, I spent before the swearing-in ceremony, I spent about two hours on the Zoom call with the Revan Tax Committee of the League. I won't go into all the, the details. The two issues that came up that got a lot of discussion were the two gaming issues that are going to be on the ballot in November. The League reviewed these in great detail and came out in opposition to both of them. So, I, just like us, maybe when we get a chance to review the information and consider whether or not we wanna support the League in their position in opposition to both gaming, both gaming items that will be on the November ballot. And it's funny, cuz one of them has one of the Indian groups opposing the other Indian group in terms of who's gonna support it and who's gonna oppose it. So, interesting situation. They're still working on the sales tax issue and I must say, it looks like it's gonna be delayed for another year because they're not gonna have a resolution out of the city managers in time for the conference in Long Beach this summer. So, it's unfortunate, but we need to keep working on that because, as most of you know, right now, those cities that have a distribution center in the cities are getting the majority of the sales tax, rather than those cities that are also being impacted with all those prime trucks that you see on your streets and UPS trucks, et cetera, that are coming from those distribution centers. Two other quick things, the Conference for Southern California Association of Governments involved a lot in housing and what the state's trying to do for housing. And I'll just leave it at that, they're not making the kind of progress obviously they'd like to. And the last thing is Orange County Sanitation District. Again, all of you are familiar with the project that's coming down, you know, Cotella, Los Alamos Boulevard, replacing and upgrading some of the old sanitation piping in there. They'll continue to work on, on that project. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Your Protem Doby?
All right, friends. Went to my mosquito and vectors board and committee meetings. I faithfully completed my Biggest Loser Challenge and that is enough of a win for me. For any of those that are trying to activate a healthier lifestyle, I would just suggest that you not look at the number, okay? Look at how your clothes fit. And I'm comfortably wearing a pair of pants that I could not wear a month and a half ago. So, I win. And then I got to fill in for our marvelous mayor at the City Selection Committee meeting. And I was reinforced again that if you don't know what to say, a smile works every time. I'm surrounded by mayors, I had no idea what they were talking about. So, I just smiled and waved, smiled and waved. I was also at the scrimmage between the, our Los Alp D and our Los Alp High School. And I'm just going to say that everyone had fun and no one got hurt. Listen, maybe a little feelings, but that's it. Everybody tapped back into their old high school days, like, "I can do this." No, baby, you can't. I also attended the very well-attended swearing-in for our, our new chief. And I have to echo what everyone else has said, but the most beautiful moment to me, and I really think it speaks to the type of man that you are, is this man took a knee and allowed his boys to pin him. And that was beautiful. I was, I was like, okay, that speaks to the type of man. So, thank you for exhibiting and letting us peek in to see that. I, I appreciate that moment. And then I also went to Sunburst Youth Academy's graduation. And I'm not a crier, okay? I'm just not. But my eyes may have sweated a little bit. Looking, if you guys don't know what it is, it's, you know, the children that need a second chance. They just need somebody to believe that there's still something in there that can be provoked out. And these babies, the elation, just the joy, the families, their own. I was like, I've, I've never seen anything like that, cuz I've never been before. But it touched me and then it also, it humbled me and it made me feel so proud that that's right here in Los Al. They come from all over, from everywhere to come to this program. So, that was also, that blessed me. And on the same day, I went to Los Al's High School graduation. It was a great day, y'all, it was such a great day. And I looked at all those babies' faces, cuz they're all like, "Yeah, I'm done with school." I was like, "I'm gonna let you have this moment." Cuz in about a month, maybe six months, a year, life is coming. But the joy that they had, cuz they were done for today, was beautiful. I enjoyed it so much. So, that's, that's all I've been up to lately.
That's it?
I think so.
Okay, I was able to participate in the Los Al High School Senior Parade along with the Chief. He arranged where we were escorted on a SWAT Bearcat vehicle, which was a blast. I jimmy'd my way up to the top so I could peek out, cuz otherwise you couldn't see me. And just had a great time. This is something that the Rosmar Homeowners Association started two years ago when there was no graduation. And they wanted a way to celebrate the, the kids that are graduating. And they have since continued this and it's just gotten bigger. It was about as small-town Hallmark movie as you could possibly imagine. People were on the corners with their posters and their balloons and it was just, it was a great day. I wanna thank Joe Shade from the Rosmar Homeowners Association for continuing this. It was just a really, really fun day and I hope they do continue it, even though there is graduation now. There were about 280 cars decorated to the hilt. It was, it was just great. I also attended the Precious Life BBQ at St. Isidore, speaking of the community center. It was a great wine tasting, beer tasting and barbecue for Precious Life, very, very well-attended. It was a great day, the weather was perfect. Did attend the swearing-in. We were surrounded by the who's who of Orange County law enforcement. I think there were maybe 15 police chiefs there. It was pretty stellar. We were very, very safe on the base, in that room, with all those officers around us. But it was just, it was a great, it was a great day and I had so many people come up after me saying, "Man, you really scored with this one." I'm like, "Yeah, we know, we know." So, congratulations, Chief. And like I say, you're not leaving us until at least London gets into college, so she's one. So, we're good. Did attend graduation with Mayor Protem Doby, that's always fun. The energy there is unbelievable and by the time you get home, you've got nothing left. And it was great. We have 17 seniors going into the military. Three of them are going to the various academies, which is unheard of for a high school to have more than one go to an academy. We have a female going to the Naval Academy to play water polo. So, that was always good. So, yeah, it was just, it's been a busy, busy month, but lots of fun, lots of celebrations. And I wanna thank everybody for including us and letting us participate. All right, and with that, City Manager?
Well, just to echo something that you said earlier, Mayor. Obviously, the Parks and Rec Department are hard at work preparing or putting the final touches on a lot of the events for the summer. So, I'm gonna ask Director Noda if she can give us a quick rundown on what we have coming up here in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Chat. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. We would like to invite the community to the Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach Summer Concert Series kicking off this Thursday on Pine Street, where we have the Winter Wonderland and the Parklet Series from 6:30 to 8:00. The event is free and we have three dates in June. And then the week of Fourth of July, we are gonna take a break from the concert series to have our Fourth of July event, which I'll talk about next. And then we'll resume back on Pine, July 14th. And then we move over to Concerts in the Park, where we go to Little Cottonwood Park and Orville Lewis, July through mid-August, until right before school starts. So, please come on out. If you go to the city's website, cityoflosalamitos.org, you can actually preview the bands that we have booked and you can listen to a snippet on one of their Facebook pages and whatnot, so. Then we would like to invite you to the Universal Waste Systems Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular at the base. This is put on or hosted by Los Alamos and Seal Beach. And the gates open at Lexington and Orangewood at 4:00. And then we have a prompt gates closure at 8:45, so we can get everybody in safely onto the tarmac to view the fireworks show. We've got food vendors, vendor booths, musical entertainment, a beer garden. It's free to attend and make sure you have your ID and also your lawn chairs and blankets, cuz we are not doing drive-up this year. We are going back to our in-person format and we're very excited to welcome the community back.
Emmeline, are they allowing walk-in to the base or do you need to drive in?
You do have to drive up and that will allow for a faster exit for everyone. But you will park on the tarmac and then walk over to the event area.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for you? That's it? Okay. Onto warrants now. Any questions?
Sure. Madam Mayor, just one question. Let me see if I can, I had my eyes dilated. Can you read the page number there?
Oh, no, you can make me put my glasses on. Page two, cuz that's three.
So, page two. City Manager, can you just explain to us a little bit? It seems like on the forfeiture money, it's about three-quarters of the way down the page. On the forfeiture money, usually we're getting money, we're not paying money.
That's right.
And so, I wonder if you could explain to us that payment there a little bit?
Of course, and I'll ask the Chief to back me up if I step out of line on this one. Basically, sir, we, when we ever, when we conduct searches, our police actually make an arrest and there is cash or other assets, we actually hold those as evidence until such time as it goes to trial. In certain times, those, once a case is adjudicated, if a potential suspect is released, then those assets are returned. That is the case with these two issues right here, is that those are cases that actually went through the judicial system, came out the other side and were rendered innocent. And so, those assets are actually returned. And so, those, that is us returning that money to the district attorney, so it can be released to those individuals.
Got it. Okay. On page seven, about three-quarters of the way down there, CoStar, it's a little over $1,000. Could you kind of bring us up to date on that?
So, CoStar is a, it's a real estate intelligence company. They actually provide a lot of data to area brokers and also real estate professionals about not just what exactly you would get in a title search, but also the ability to take a look at any public document that's tied to that actual property. So, it's very helpful for forward planning in terms of economic development, where we might look at different properties and be able to say, "Well, we know that there's a lease coming due here in about two months. We know that the property next door might have a lease that's coming due maybe in a couple of months after that. Is that an opportunity for us to look at a way to combine those spaces, perhaps provide some type of planning incentive or an economic development incentive in order to bring a new type of business into the town?" So, it's really an intelligence gathering application, but it also helps us really do some of our forward planning when the Development Services Team gets together to talk about where exactly we might take our economic developments efforts in the future.
Okay?
Good. Thank you.
I have one question. Yeah. You know, I see on page seven, we don't have to talk about the specific charge, but there's a reference to a, a payment to a law firm for a pending lawsuit. I'm just wondering whether we can get a periodic litigation summary or update, whether it's in closed session or through a report? You know, I know a lot of times these matters just drag on for years and nothing really happens, but maybe just a, you know, biannual update or something like that, just so we, we see what the list of pending litigation is against the city?
And that, you're referring to the Board and Semner?
That one specifically is what sort of reminded me to, to ask for this, but, but nothing specific about that claim perhaps, but just general litigation update. Okay. And it doesn't have to be that frequent, cuz like I said, I know these sometimes drag on and there's not a lot of activity for many months, sometimes years, while you're waiting for the court to sort of push the case along, but it'd be great to get that.
That's not a problem, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Chirko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, onto the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Do I have any council that wanna pull anything?
May I ask just a couple of questions on E and H?
Sure.
On E, could, could you just explain to the City Manager, maybe with Emmeline's help, since this park is so close to Little Cottonwood Park, you know, right down the street, how are the programs for these and what's going to be located in this park coordinated? And then how much public input have we gotten as to what's gonna be put in the park and how that's gonna be utilized?
So, maybe if I can start from a 30,000-foot view and then I'll ask Director Noda to really fill in some of the details about on the ground specifically. What we've done here in the last couple of months is really take a look at our entire park system and really try to hone in on what exactly, first of all, what do we have there today? How exactly does it match up in terms of making sure that we have balance across our different parks to ensure that we're offering different activities at all different locations? So, we don't have all softball fields, we don't have all soccer fields. We have the ability to actually meet all of those different needs. And then really taking a look at what exactly the improvements that need to be made for each one of those parks in order to make sure that we have achieved that balance going forward. I know that the, the Parks and Rec team has worked incredibly hard in terms of the amount of input that they've gotten from this, and not to mention the, the work that the Parks and Rec Commission has done independent of that, in order to make sure that we're actually hitting that mix and why exactly we're targeting the very specific things that we are in each one of the parks. Director Noda, would you mind talking a little bit about the improvements that are going into Sternspark and what exactly the overall goal is?
I'm assuming you meant this Director Noda? Good evening again. The Parks and Rec Commission did meet several times, just a little history. Every August, we do a park tour with the Commission and we all load into the city van and we go to all of the parks and facilities. And I believe it was last year, they did a wish list of what they would like to see. as City Manager Simmons said, citywide, to accomplish goals that we have. So with Sterns Park, we are proposing an all-inclusive playground and then also some exercise equipment. And the Commission was very in favor of both of these items. The public, you know, always has input on anything that is on the Parks and Rec agenda. So, you know, we asked the Parks and Rec Commissioners themselves to go out to their neighbors as they're at the parks, as they're talking in their neighborhoods, and ask them what they want to see. And that was the feedback that they were, they were given as well, and as well as the other parks that we'll be touching upon in the future. And then as far as programming, we will be hoping to do some mobile rec programs so that we can rotate among the different parks as we, you know, get more resources and such. So that's kind of the plan.
And then Director Noda, also, just the, the type of, of, I'm sorry, playground equipment and everything that's going into Sterns Park is special, right?
All-inclusive, which means that all abilities are able to utilize. It is fully accessible, and it is something that, you know, we've always been working towards, especially even in our adaptive recreation needs, just assessing kind of the gaps that we have in the community.
Thank you.
And then you start H.
Yeah, on H, could you just talk a little bit about the city's philosophy in, you know, in buying new cars for replacement, especially I think we have two-watch Commander's cars involved, and how we try to maintain the cars and get as much life out of them as we can, and why it's appropriate for two-watch Commander's cars at this point in time?
Of course, sir. And, and if I can, I'd like to start with the bigger picture again, which is part of the SFP, or I'm sorry, the Fiscal Stabilization Plan that the council unanimously approved twice, really speaks to ensuring that we are getting the most out of the dollars that we actually pay out into the private sector or when we go out and buy things. I have to commend the other Director Noda for the work that he's done in terms of actually managing the fleets ever since taking control and really making sure that we are actually distributing our cars. One of the things that we do is whenever we have the opportunity to rotate a car into a different position that might not be as, maybe not, doesn't operate at such a high tempo and doesn't have as many miles, we're able to move those cars around in order to make sure that we're actually getting the most out of the dollars that we're spending on a day-to-day basis. In this particular instance, the idea of going to two-watch Commander cars is simply this, is that policing is a 24-hour-a-day operation. We have a watch Commander car that is, for all intents and purposes, operational all that time. The problem with that is that it definitely shortens the lifespan of that vehicle. By going to a model where we have two cars, it not only solves that issue and extends the life of both of those vehicles out, but it also allows us to use that vehicle whenever is needed in terms of if we have a patrol unit go down, we're able to sub that car in. If we ever had to call in another officer for if we had a situation where we needed to have more officers on duty, we're able to put that car into rotation without actually incurring that extra cost or possibly putting the officer in a car out there that doesn't necessarily work. The Chief and I were talking about a car today specifically, which is something that we'll probably have to deal with in the future, where we've been cannibalizing our cars for different parts. And while that's an effective way to save money in the short term, the long term, it's quite detrimental to your overall operations. And so by going with these two purchases, we believe it gives us enough flexibility to be able to answer the mission at hand and probably take ourselves to what the industry best practices with regards to the way that we're deploying our police fleet.
Okay, good. If there are other questions, Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Does anybody have any other items they want to pull? Okay, so a motion from Councilmember Bates.
Second.
Second. One favor.
Aye.
All right. We are now on to our public hearing, adoption of the fiscal 2223 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Program Budget. Chet, I'll take that.
So just a few moments before I turn it over to Craig, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. But I did want to point out that this budget is a fairly ambitious budget in terms of what it's hoping to achieve. I have to say that when the council approved the last year's budget, I know that the vast majority of us felt very challenged but very energized by the idea that we were going to be able to get out and do this work. And I think that we've succeeded to, to a very high standard on that. This is the next step of that evolution. And I'll let Craig get into the details of it, and then Director Noda to answer any questions about the CIP projects. But I can say that whereas year one, I'll allude to it as 2021, that was really about making sure the city was in a strong financial position and enabling us to really start to think about what exactly the future of this town looks like. Year number two, so 2122, was really about building the organization and understanding what exactly the needs and the goals were going to be moving forward. This coming year is really about getting out onto the street and making sure that we're able to actually execute on those ideas. Having a CIP plan that calls for the expenditure of just over $4 million is no small thing for a city of this size. And the fact that the finance team and Director Noda were able to figure out a way to accomplish that with only spending 50% general fund as opposed to 100% general fund is, well, I think it's quite impressive. So without that, that being said, I'm going to let Craig walk us through the budget. And obviously, any questions that you have, please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Chet. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Staff and residents of Los Alamos.
Louder, Craig, please, into the mic.
Okay. Now is this okay?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm pleased to present the budget for the fiscal year 2223 and 2324. Not advancing. Yeah, breathe. There we go. Hang on. Mayor's block with the, what do you think?
Needless to say, one of the improvements that we'll be doing within the budget is revamping the technology within the city's council chambers so that hopefully we don't have this problem going forward. Yeah. And no, I did not do that just to, I'll straighten a point.
Okay now? Good, thank you. All right. The preliminary budget for 2223 and 2324 was presented to council at the May 16th council meeting. There were no changes recommended at that, at that time. And this report tonight provides essentially identical information, but it's also in addition to budget line item detail, which is included in the agenda, and individual presentations from each of the departments detailing their respective department so operations and goals for the coming fiscal year. This again represents a two-year budget cycle. We started this process last budget cycle. And to repeat, this is going to be a budget adopting fiscal, proposing to adopt fiscal year 2223 and providing projections for the next fiscal year 2324, which provides valuable planning tool and for staff and to anticipate future projects and operations. This will also assist the city in focusing on short and long-term goals, along with strategic aspects of the projects and operations planning to ensure they align with the FSP. This assists, this will assist in the development of future financial planning tools as well. The last budget presentation, I presented a market update on the economy, but I'll just briefly go touch on the highlights tonight. The inflation continues to be a primary concern. It's growing double digits now. U.S. Treasury is attempting to stay ahead of growth with the adjustments. Their latest announcement is possibly planning a 75 or three-quarters of a percent adjustment. Financial and real estate markets are adjusting accordingly. The downturn in recession is forecasted at the end of this calendar year and then continuing into 2023. But with that, adjustments have been made to the budget to allow for recessionary impacts. On the revenue projections, property taxes, sales, use taxes, Measure Y, all lead with positive growth. This group represents over 60% of all revenues. Growth is projected for secured property tax. The housing market changes are expected in the near future. Sales and use taxes reflect continued positive growth. The local economy has returned to pre-pandemic levels. Measure Y local, local sales tax reflects significant change from the previous budget. This is highlighted by some transaction categories that are greater than 150% of the Bradley Burns rate. Inflation and resulting recession remain the primary concern, as mentioned. And adjustments have been made to the budget revenue categories to reflect this accordingly. This is a snapshot of the general fund revenue projections for 2223. The total revenues and transfers in are $21.3 million, including all revenue categories. The main takeaways from the revenue projections, the increase is mainly coming from the infusion of Measure Y funds. This now is the largest revenue source for the city. Other noted increases further improve the city's overall revenue picture related to the long-term model. And projections and growth in other revenue categories are dependent on the direction of the economy. On the expenditure side, the proposed expenditures represent further restructuring of the city's internal operations, as City Manager referenced, in order to meet the goals set forth in the departments in the city. The projected expenditures for fiscal year 2223 are $20.4 million. Salaries reflect the recently negotiated two-year MOU agreements and corresponding cost of living adjustments. And development of aggressive capital improvement plan aimed at protecting Los Alamos residents' quality of life, ensuring that the long-term viability of the city's infrastructure is maintained. This is a snapshot of the proposed general fund expenditures for all departments, including internal fund operating transfers of $20.3 million or approximately $20.4 million. In this section now, we're going to go dive into the department overviews. I think, believe, first up is administration.
So I draw the, the short straw, so I will be doing the administration presentation. Either Wendy or Chelsea will be doing this next year. So now that I've said it in public, it will happen. As you know, the administration is really, I like to think of kind of the, whereas we have all the operational departments, you have the, I'll call it the spoke, that all enter into where exactly the direction from the council comes from. And we manage the dissemination of information, also the how exactly that information is transferred to the public, but then also how exactly we manage our internal workings through the HR department. I have to say that it's an impressive amount of work for two individuals really to handle at the end of the day. This means that you have a city clerk who is now acting in dual capacity as your communications director, and you also have Chelsea taking on just about everything under the sun in terms of HR and risk management. This coming year will be going through a lot of what I'll call upgrades to a number of our different systems that we have. Particularly in HR, they'll be bringing on the new HR system and ensuring that that is open to the public and actually meets best standards within the city clerk's department. Obviously, the management of the upcoming election, increasing the availability and the access to our own record system, providing that additional level of transparency, but also working on branding and increasing the communication outflow to the various, not only our businesses, but our residents as well. And then with regards to the City Manager's office, we'll be doing this year a lot of strategic planning that has to do with where exactly we look to make investments in the years to come, both in our own facilities and then also out in the community. This will take into account a lot of the forward planning that we're doing with the finance department in terms of what monies will be available, how exactly we access those monies through either grants or other application processes, and how exactly we can take advantage of certain monies that are being offered by the federal and state governments, match it with our own money in order to get a bigger bang for our bucks here locally. So those will be the main goals coming out of the administration department this year. One note, we have decided to forego the filling of the executive assistant position at this time, and that really is just to allow the three of us to work together and figure out where exactly we see holes within our organization and to be able to fill those holes going forward. So I think it was best just to give this a six-to-eight-month time to shake out and see if there's other needs that we might need that we haven't been able to identify at this point, and then also in consultation with the council about different goals and objectives that you might have going forward.
Okay.
So next up is Finance Department. So the Finance Department manages a lot of custodial things for the city, including the accounts payable. We issued over $10.7 million in payments. This is relating to last fiscal year. Managed cash investment portfolio of $15 million. Managed the debt portfolio of $3.3 million for the city's outstanding certificate of participation bonds. Managing over 23 special funds, including the general fund, including billing and receiving, receivables, managing payroll, managing the budget, approximately $17.1 million. That was the 2021 budget. Managed purchasing orders, purchasing, long-term modeling and forecasting, we're looking ahead five years. And of course, importantly, the award for the certificate of achievement for financial reporting issued by the Government Finance Officers Association for last year. On the horizon for finance, some of the goals, we're looking into cost recovery, cost allocation. We'll be issuing an RFP, as granted by the council, to update the city's master fees and cost allocation to obtain full cost recovery and competitiveness with surrounding jurisdictions that were applicable. We'll also be looking at review of internal service funds, review of methodology for the fair allocation, and charges to all departments. We're looking into financial system upgrades to improve system data security, internal audit controls, increased operational work efficiencies from processing to reporting, and also updating electronic payroll reporting for financial and electronic enhancements. This will be moving away from the manually-prepared timesheets to electronic payroll and having employees have access to online forms and changes, eliminating paper storage filing. So that sums up the finance side, because we're on to...
Can we ask a question there?
Yes, sir.
I heard a comment about manually-prepared timesheets.
Yes.
So...
Why, why, where's the challenge there of doing that online?
Well, and I think that's the point, sir, is that there's been a long-held practice here for many, many years of manually doing work that we can now transition to either an application or just an online-based service that will make not only, I think, everyone's lives easier at the end of the day, both for our employees and our finance staff that actually does this work, but not to mention the fact that the auditing ability to be able to go in and actually access the data in a meaningful way as opposed to running through, you know, 12 months of timesheets. It's just an efficiency that's way past its due in terms of actually being implemented here.
So that's on the docket to get done this year, is to try and make that transition?
Well, and I will say this, and I think this is a credit to Craig, is that for, for lack of a better term, he's been a one-man show for quite some time. And so I made the commitment when Craig came on board that we would not force large-scale changes on him or his staff until he actually had a staff. And now that we have accomplished that, now I think it's time that we're going to have the manpower to be able to move these goals across the finish line.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I have the honor and privilege not to go over the Development Services Department with you. So Development Services, working with the other departments in the City Manager, establishes a long-range vision by promoting livability, aesthetic, and economic development via two main divisions, Community Development, Public Works. I get asked a lot of what exactly is Development Services, so that's why I put that line in there. We're basically two divisions, main divisions. We also plan, design, operate, and maintain public infrastructures, including the streets, street landscaping, parks, storm drains, buildings. We oversee the city's fleet and equipment, and we protect city's assets safely, efficiently, and effectively through maintenance and replacement, and therefore provide a safe, clean, and pleasant environment for both city team members and the resident and business community of Los Alamos. So let's take a look at some statistics and accomplishments that we have done this past year. You know, my personality is I'm always forging forward, and I'm kind of checking off the box. If you see my notepads, I have nothing but boxes. I have this massive checklist. So doing this here, I kind of want to give kudos, a real brief second, to the Development Services Team, because we have accomplished a lot. Like City Manager Simmons stated, we had a very aggressive program and CIP project this past year. this past year, and I like to say that we're going to probably accomplish every single one of them. So again, let's go over some of the stuff that we have here. We did a Lost Out Bucks program. You know, City Council approved this program and injected over $100,000 into the local economy in a three to four-month span. We also take a look at some of the planning stuff that we did. We went and did 104 business and reviewed and completion. We did 106 encroachment permits, 27 wide load permits. I put down here, look at the service request that our Public Works Division did. Last year, we did 350. We upped our game to 474. We have over 1,200 inspection that our Building and Safety Division did this past year, and our code, by Code Enforcement Division did over 600 cases not received. We did, we closed 600 cases this past year. Some projects and programs that we did, Town Center Mixed Use Strategic Plan, we completed that. We're in the midst of hopefully completing the housing element really soon. We did some muni code updates. We also did a whole RFP for waste hauler and SB 1383 mandates, Economic Development Program. I'm just naming a few we did here. We did a Good Morning Los Alamos, Business Welcome packets. We did our Parklet series. We entered into some oil battery recycling program, skincare program, and of course, we updated our urban forest program by planting trees and also doing a memorial, adding a memorial dedication program. Our capital improvement project there, again, this is a listing of some of the stuff that we did, not every single one we did, but a lot of it. Street Improvement Project that is, will commence in a couple of weeks. CDBG Street Improvement Project, Old Town West Striping Project, Street and Pavement Marking Project that will occur in four to six weeks, Median Beautification Project, Overhead Arterial Street Sign Project, curb painting project, where we did, not only went to every address and did the little Lost Owl branding, but we also painted all the red curb, the white curb and the green curbs in the city. We did Master Storm Drain Management Plan. We did a city boundary survey project. We completed the Fenley Pump Project, and then we also are in the midst and probably in, pretty soon, we're going to complete the Civic Center Police and Community Center Office Project. So it was very, very large program, and again, I want to give special kudos to the Development Services Team for working through this very, very ambitious plan that we had.
That's all? I'm just kidding. That's very impressive.
Yes, we are going to up our game this coming fiscal year. We'll go over that in a second.
Hold on, Ron, just a second. Councilwoman Bates.
Two questions. Ron, first for you. Where are we with the Los Albux program? Are we going to reinstitute that with the balance of the federal money that's available, or has that been reprogrammed somewhere else?
We're in the midst of developing a second phase of the Economic Development Program, and so we will bring back to council at a future meeting that entire plan for council to consider. So yes, there will be a second phase of the Lost Out Bucks Program with other items as well.
Thank you. And, and this question is really for the city manager and for you, Mr. Noda. My question is simply this. One of the things that I hate for our council to do, quite frankly, is to be asked to and to go ahead and budget a huge amount of money for capital improvements, and I appreciate that. And my question is simply this. Why don't you share with us some of the details of the planning that you've done to make sure that we're not just budgeting money and it's never going to be expended during this next fiscal year?
And that's, I think, an incredibly fair question, and I think we see it in a lot of jurisdictions where councils are asked to appropriate large funds with no intention of ever spending them.
Exactly.
I will be the first to admit that over $4 million is a very ambitious plan. One of the ways that we try to make sure that we are able to accomplish that is by taking a very, I'll call it a nimble approach to the way that we staff. As you can tell, we are not a large team here. We, we do a lot with a little. We have people that are wearing multiple hats and then hats upon hats, so that task can become very daunting. Whenever we do feel the need, what I have done in the past is we go out and we seek specialized help for whatever that specialized need is, and the reason for doing that is, yes, we may pay a little bit more for it in the short run, but much like our replacement plan, it's a, it's an investment in our future that we're able to actually turn off that need or that cost when we no longer need it and move on to whatever the new need is. And so in this instance, we will be needing and we will be seeking additional help from contractors and then also from maybe some retired annu- annuitants who will be able to come in and step in and fill some of the voids that we have going forward. And that will speak to project management, even staff management to a certain extent. I'm reasonably assured, and this is through conversations with the deputy city manager Noda, and then also with our, with our Public Works Team, that we will be able to accomplish what we have asked for at this point. I will offer two caveats to that, though. One is we are in the middle of a very uncertain time in terms of supply chain.
Right.
That has been an issue for us in the past. We believe that we've corrected a lot of those issues going forward. That being said, there are a number of old city policies that might hinder our ability to act quickly. Those will be a series of changes that we will be bringing back to the city council to address here in the near future, and we think that that should give us the ability to actually be able to move forward quickly. The other is cost. As you know, inflation is going through the roof at the moment, and we are trying to move around our purchases and make them strategic to ensure that we are not wasting anyone's time or money, but the simple fact is that things cost dramatically more than they did a year ago. And so there may be instances where we might actually have to come back to the council and ask for adjustments, but these are our best guesses as to where exactly the cost will end at the end of the day.
Thank you.
And adding on to Ron's comment, is there any way when we do the mid-year budget review and budget adjustment, we could also do a mid-year CIP review?
Of course.
Just to see where we are with some of the things.
Exactly. That is not, I think that's a fantastic idea, and then also it'll give us an opportunity to do some of the forward planning for the next year's budget as well. So yes, of course.
Thank you. Tonya?
I have a very basic question. All these projects, I heard like 59 projects. How many people are on your team?
We have a slide at the end, but we have me, a manager, an analyst, a department secretary, that's four. I have six public work guys, five, so that's, that's 10. So I have 10 full-time, and then I have like maybe three or four part-timers, and the rest are contracted.
Y'all gonna get all that done?
They don't sleep.
With like 11 people?
Yeah.
I love Lost Out, that's all.
That's a challenge.
That's wild. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm back.
Any other questions? I'll move on. Five things on the horizon. These are things that we are hoping to accomplish in the next four to six months. Later on the slides, I will give you a little more broader scope, so you might see a couple of, of repeats there. But we have a very ambitious economic development and another cap, a year of ambitious CIP projects. And so the one that we're hoping to again accomplish within the four to six months is a second phase of Lost Out Bucks, which I've mentioned that the first phase was highly successful, and we're going to come back to a future council meeting. Another one that is, we're going to continue doing is Good Morning Los Alamos. The Save the Date should be coming out soon, and then of course, we're also wanting to do a Business Information Workshop Series, and hopefully we're going to partner out with other organizations in the city to offer those for our business community. CIP projects, we're going to complete the 21, 22 CIP project list. Unfortunately, I could not get it done by July 1st because of supply chains and procurement, but we are slated to get that done by hopefully September. And then the painting project. So we're doing, our Public Works Division is painting a lot of the infrastructure with in-house, whether it's at the community center, whether it's at City Hall or the police department. So that's a big project that we're going to do in the next four to six months. Planning, we're going to do the R4 rezoning, we're going to do an update on the park development fees, and then we're doing a Town Center Mixed Use Outreach. So council did approve the Town Center Mixed Use, and now we're going to go out there and basically advertise and get developers and property owners to buy into that vision. So we started that process. Community connectivity, working with the Los Alamos organization. Again, working with various businesses like the Chamber of Commerce, hopefully, or the school district on other programs initiative, and of course, my big one that we're going to do in the next four to six months is business visits. I hope to visit a vast majority of the businesses out there with the Development Services Team. And of course, community engagement is, we're working on like a community trash event, we're working on a sunset market, and we're working on an art program that to offer to the community.
What's a sunset market? I'm sorry.
So it's like a night market, just held at night, like a, yeah, like we'll have restaurants, it's like a street fair at night. Yeah, we're working on that. Correct.
I'll be there.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I can just add, Ron, it appears this came out of the Rev and Tax Committee of the League of California Cities. One of the major asks from the league to the state legislature is funding for the trash, the whole issue of household food waste.
Organic waste, yeah.
Yeah, and it may be that we'll be able to get some funding from the state for that, and we'll just need to stay on top of that to make sure we apply and get what allocations are available.
Absolutely, sir. We just received $20,000 from a grant, and so we're, we're definitely trying to stay on top of it. We do have a consultant, Mike Ballier, that assists us with that, so we're definitely trying to stay on top of that, sir.
Great.
All right, so again, I might repeat some stuff, but we're going to go over each division. Again, Development Services are made up of six divisions. So first one is Economic Development. I've talked about Lost Out Bucks, and then we're hoping that in the second part of the fiscal year, we want to do a residential business improvement program where if you buy, you know, supplies and hardware in the city of Los Alamos to improve your business, the aesthetics of it or your house in terms of landscaping, that the city can maybe reimburse you on a certain percentage of costs. And then, of course, I mentioned before, working with organizations in the city, other organization, is a Business Information Workshop Series. We have our Engineering Services that takes the bulk of our CIP projects. So again, we'll go over later on in the presentation, but some upcoming CIP projects for this coming fiscal year is a street improvement project, the second phase, a second phase of the street pavement marking project, Stern's Park Project, and of course, we're going to take tackle on the Laurel Park Tennis Court projects as well. Moving on to building and safety, our hope is a year from now, we can increase our counter hours to provide more customer service to those in need, and then increasing the public outreach out there. I've learned that a lot of people don't know the exact time to when to get a permit, when not to get a permit when they're fixing their home, so we're going to do a big increase of public outreach to inform the community. Moving on to code enforcement, we're going to expand our code enforcement, seven-day-a-week coverage. They're going to be taking the lead on our community trash event. Right now, we're slated for hopefully two in a calendar year, and then we're working on strategic code enforcement program that will assist. One of the programs that we're looking at, for instance, is to assist with rent because 50, almost 50% of the residents living in Los Alamos rent apartment or rent a house, and so we're looking into programs where we can assist and provide information for Moving on, planning, we're doing fees update. I mentioned earlier that we're doing a traffic mitigation fee update or a park development fee update, so we're working on that. Again, I mentioned again, Town Center Mixed Use Strategic Plan Outreach, and the big one that we're going to tackle here is a neighborhood signage project where hopefully every neighborhood in the city will have an entry sign that designate their neighborhood. So we're working on that. Our Public Works Division will do a painting project, as I mentioned, and then their big task this coming fiscal year will be park beautification. So we're going to tackle the parks, which includes not only Stern's Park that we mentioned before, or Laurel Park, the Tennis Court Project, but we're going to take a look at all the other pocket parks as well. And moving on, so our goal in Development Services along with the rest of the city is we want to provide quality customer service, provide first-class service to Los Alamos, and listen to the residents and business community. We plan on doing business visits and surveys with a goal in mind to create a high quality of life and makes Los Alamos a thriving community. So again, we're doing that through, again, responsiveness to the residents, business, property owners, developers, and of course, city and community engagement. Challenges, we have a lot of challenges, and City Manager Simmons have kind of went over that. You can see right there in the right box right there, that showcased the support personnel that we have in Development Services. We have a director, a manager, and analyst, like I mentioned, a department secretary, economic development supervisor, code enforcement, six public works, and then the rest are support staff in terms of part-time. We have, just like any other business sector in California or maybe across the nation, but labor, we encounter labor issues. It is difficult to hire exceptional people sometimes, and it's getting harder every day to retain them, so we must be able to compete and make working for Los Alamos attractive, and it gets, I'll be honest, harder every day as we go on. Project management, again, as mentioned, rising costs and supply chain concern. I mentioned before in past council meetings that sometimes the rising cost is upwards as 30% cost increase on a project. And supply chain, it's not, right now, today, it's not, how do you call, it's normal to hear someone say, it's going to take me four to six months to get it. We have an air conditioner down at the community center, and we're getting ready for summer programming, and the vendor is saying that it's going to take them about four months to get a replacement unit. So we're, you know, it takes us time to hunt down and try to hopefully make that timeframe a little shorter. And another challenge is the future. You know, technology, we have solar coming in, we have electric vehicles coming in, and a long time, and along with that, some of the state mandates. I believe council is aware of a lot of the mandates that Development Services has to go through. SB 1383, which is a trash and recycling mandate. SB 296, which is a code enforcement mandate. We have arena numbers that we have to meet. We have SB 9, we have NPDS, stormwater, we have WQMP, we have street sweeping, we have a lot of mandates, and we are, have to be prepared, and we have to be agile enough to respond accordingly on whatever the state of California or the federal government imposes on us. And so we keep on top of that as best we can, and hopefully we can tackle that when that time comes.
Mayor, that's another comment, if I may. Ron, obviously, taking a look at the permitting process, especially for homeowners, I think is really important, and the simpler you can make it, I think the better. When I think about replacing windows, which is going to be, I think, happening more and more, people hooking electrical into their garage 240 to power their electric vehicles, pergolas that they're replacing in the backyard, redoing their concrete driveway maybe with bricks or something like that. I guess my point would be is, obviously, we want to recover our costs, no more, no less, but the simpler we can make that, I think the more likely that homeowners are going to comply, comply, because right now, in many of these cases, they're not even sure whether or not they need a permit, and certainly, they don't want to ask if they, you know, if something that can be done fairly quickly and unobtrusively, they're just more than likely to do it. So I think the more education we can get, and, and really what it's for, and I think this is what we need to emphasize, it's for their safety. That's the key, and they should want a city inspector to come out and take a look at it, even though we're paying, they're paying a little for that, but that's the way we make the homes and the improvements that are being made safe for the entire community and especially for the person that's putting it in. So I would hope that you'd spend quite a bit of time thinking about that and how we can do it efficiently, get people more engaged, and do it as, as I say, with as low-keyed an impact, so people will think, oh, God, I got to go to the city and get a permit, this thing's going to take, hey, I'd sure like to put those windows in next week, and I'm worried that that's going to take me three weeks to even get the permit considered. So I think that's where the education's going to be involved.
Okay. You're absolutely right, sir. You said it perfectly, yes.
And Ron, I just wanted to comment real quick just on your departments. You know, Public Works and Community Relations, you know, they've really stepped up their game in the past couple of years. I mean, down to, they're at Winter Wonderland, they're at Trunk or Treat, having contests about who can decorate the best, Spring Carnival, they're just all over the place, down to the decorations for the center medians. You know, it's those little details that the residents really, you know, because those guys are usually, you know, buried behind the scenes, and the fact that they're coming out a lot of times on their personal time to be able to do that. And then the other thing with the universal waste, you know, this was new for us, and I was very, very leery about going with somebody new, because there wasn't a problem with our incumbent, but, you know, for a better price and everything, and just kind of sitting back watching. back watching how they were gonna operate. Well, we had a perfect example for Memorial Day weekend. Half the city was moved to trash pickup on Fridays, our neighborhood included. So when Memorial Day hit, everything's pushed a day later. So Friday, we get home and the trash is still sitting there, I'm like, "Are we gonna have to wait until Monday?" And they were there first thing Saturday morning picking up all the trash for the weekend, so kudos to them if you could forward that on to me out that people noticed that they were out there on Saturdays picking up the trash instead of having it sit there all weekend. So far, they've held up to everything that they've said they were going to.
I will, Mayor, thank you.
I got a quick with the supply chain. I've been affected by it personally in my own business and y'all might have considered this, so indulge me if that's the case, but I have gone referral-based. Like, some of the vendors that I use, I've just asked them, "Hey, do you also have access?" Because a lot of the people that we're working with, they've delved into other things. The pandemic has made people put on more hats, so you know, maybe the, or another city as a resource, like I know you guys have collaborations with all sorts of other cities, maybe collaborating with them somehow, like if, okay, well Seal Beach, they said that they needed redo their ACs too and then we got Westminster in it and so you can do like a bulk buy or just asking a pre-existing or someone that you might not even consider, like your plumber. "Hey man, you know anything about an AC distributor?" Well, matter of fact, I do, I actually got into that in the last two years. So just getting outside of the box that way. I know y'all live outside of the box, so this is just something that I've personally had to do in my own business to kinda get around the inevitable supply chain issues.
No, you hit it right on the head. I think it helps that I'm not raised in the Development Services, you know, I have a recreation background, so I do kinda come up with outside-the-box thinking sometimes, so absolutely, you know, we try to piggyback on, you know, like we're trying to piggyback with the OC sanitation district on fixing some of our bus pads in the city, so we're trying to do stuff like that, absolutely.
I figured.
Before we go any further, I just want to say that I don't even think Ron has a box, quite frankly. The amount of work that he is able to get done with the limited staff that he has is nothing short of an amazing and I think that if you take a look at just the sheer scope of what we're talking about, Development Services accomplishing, it's not just the Public Works, it's not just the planning that's currently going on, but he's also creating a brand-new division this year in Economic Development and that's, I mean, doing that by itself is hard work, doing it well is incredibly hard work, but doing it while doing everything else is almost impossible, so I just have to say, my hat is off to him.
I have more pictures for you. The Los Alamos Recreation and Community Services Department creates quality of life for the residents of Los Alamos in a variety of ways, from programs and classes, preschool program, senior programs, youth and adult sports, seasonal day camp, and summer parks program, and our popular special events. This slide illustrates some statistics of the department for the last year, from our social media followers to program and event attendance, support personnel, and connecting and supporting local nonprofits. As you can see from the slide, we serve thousands of residents. We serve all ages of our population, from our preschoolers to older adults in the variety of programs we offer. Just here illustrated is our day camp, summer parks program, our senior programs, ballet classes, our Balance and Fitness class, which is always full with over 100 seniors, our senior grocery program, our adult sports program, and those are just some examples. We offer 13 types of special events, it said types, not dates, throughout the year and provide experiences that unite the community together with the residents, businesses, churches, and nonprofits. Kicking off the year from Weekend of Art, our new Teen Expo, Senior Prom, Eight Summer Concerts, Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular, July Parks Make Life Better Month Events, Week of Los Al, which encompasses Serve Los Al, Bikes and Bytes, Family Day, Race Los Al, and My City, My Los Al Street Fair, Trunk or Treat, and finally, to close out the year, Winter Wonderland. Let's just say we know how to throw a party. We get out the word into the community in a variety of ways to inform of our offerings from our city website, social media, weekly e-news, our recreation brochure, street banners, and our YouTube channel. We also provide citywide graphic support to all of our departments in the city. But we couldn't do all of this without our partners and a big thanks to these major supporters, especially Memorial Care, Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, and Southland Credit Union. We work with many of the local nonprofits and meet monthly through Serve Los Al. We partner with the cities of Seal Beach, Cypress, and the community of Rossmore and work with the Los Alamos Joint Forces Training Base, the Los Alamos Unified School District, and the Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce. We partner with many businesses and organizations through our partnership program and with individual events and we raise over $200,000 in sponsorships each year. We are looking forward to our partnership with the new Los Alamos Community Foundation. Many of the goals I've touched on this slide, but I did want to highlight that we did recently complete a senior needs assessment and are working on a variety of new programs for older adults as a result of those responses to introduce to the community to expand our offerings for this age group. We're also working to expand our teen offerings through Youth and Government and our Teen Expo, as well as provide services for families with special needs through adaptive recreation. We are also working on two other potential events that are in the development phase and I will give you more information at a later date, but we're excited and yes, we have capacity to add two more events. We're working together with Development Services for capital improvement projects at a few of our parks, as well as at the community center. Our new positions proposed include a new full-time recreation coordinator to coordinate and oversee contract classes, registration, tennis, staff enrichment classes, preschool program, Weekend of Art, Halloween and holiday decoration contests, and our new adaptive recreation program. We also are proposing two part-time community services coordinators to coordinate youth sports, parks programs, senior programs, and all of our special events in support of. And as you can see on this slide, we find any reason to dress up for any occasion and we'd just like to thank you for your support, coming out to Spring Carnival in full force, taking a picture with our Peter Rabbit bunny, and just to the community, our Parks and Recreation and Culture Arts Commission for just coming out and supporting our vision of what we see as Los Alamos. Many of our commissioners work in other cities or talk to their friends and family and they say, "How come I don't have that in my community?" And they're a little bit jealous of what we offer here in Los Alamos. We have a dynamic team and that loves this community. A lot of the staff have grown up in the community and just completely identify with this community and what the vision is that the city council has. And we just take pride and bring joy and smiles to every resident of Los Alamos through our programs, services, and events that we provide. Thank you.
Question? Emily, could you share with us, I know you go to a great extent to make sure the quality of all our programming stays very high and I wonder if you could share with the council what you go through in evaluating our contract classes to make sure we're getting repeat contractors who are really doing a good job at delivering the service to the community? What kind of an evaluation process or that do you use with these contractors before you decide to invite them back the next year, for example?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Bates. We definitely do an evaluation process with our staff. We sit in on the classes, not as long as, we're also taking marketing pictures and watching. A lot of our own children are in the classes and we ask the participants, you know, if they're having a great time. The parents, you know, they give us feedback at the front desk as they're leaving. We get rave reviews of our contract class instructors. You know, in the past, we actually had probably double the amount of instructors, but maybe with that, you don't always have the quality, so in decreasing the quantity, we can really make sure that we have the quality delivered and be able to make it out to those classes.
Thank you. Emily, one other thing I noticed on that chart where you listed all the jobs for that new position, I think next to tennis, you forgot pickleball, but I know you intended to put that on the chart, but I'm just checking.
Yes, I was waiting for Mr. Noda to say pickleball and he didn't, so I left it off. But we are, we have some plans for the future.
Thank you.
With this being a public hearing, I'd like to open it up for any public comment. Very quiet out there. Okay, so I'll bring it down to council for any other questions or comments.
Police Department.
Mayor, we have just one more.
You know, you had your day on Thursday, that's your done.
Yeah, that's it. He did so well.
I thought you were trying to bail me out. I appreciate the effort.
Oh, wow.
Your way of just approving everything you want, I appreciate that.
All right, it's your turn, I'm sorry.
Before I get started, this is the first chance I've had to say thank you, not only to you, Madam Mayor, but the council and all the executives around the city, as well as the OCFA Fire Chief and Division Chief for showing up and the support from all of you on Thursday was immense and very heartfelt and I had countless people come up to me recognizing that all of you were there and I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate all of you being there. You truly embrace the sentiment of the city of Los Alamos being a family and you practice what you preach, so thank you. Now, as far as the police department goes, the Administration Division, you can see the components here, encompassing a budget of just under $7.4 million, dealing with policy training, transparency, and as we get in, get my feet wet and everything stops spinning so much, we'll be establishing the mission, vision, mission, vision, and values, as well as maybe a strategic plan for the police department in the near future. The Support Services Division, dealing with criminal investigations, administrative investigations, outreach, records, property, and evidence. Also, recruitment and retention being a big one, Westcom, Decad, RMS, personnel, training, budget, facilities, and fleet being a big one, and communications and technology. And then when we get into the Operations Division, that deals with everything patrol-related and trying to establish some positions that we have not had in the past, some of our goals and re-establishing the SRO position, Explorers Traffic Position, and possibly even K-9. So some of the challenges that we're running into for recruitment, I think we can, as the mayor said on Thursday, we can check the box on the chief recruitment there, but ROPA and PRA are also hurdles that we're trying to overcome. And on the horizon, so the first one is gonna be staffing, getting up to our first full complement of officers and, you know, recruitment and retention is a problem, a pervasive problem in all of law enforcement, no different for us. However, we do have a plan in place, we have numerous people and backgrounds, and we're still optimistic to be able to meet that goal before this year is out. As far as the facilities go, Ron has done an amazing job of trying to address some of the concerns that were brought up during the last negotiations of fixing some of the facilities over the police department and for that, I'm very thankful. Fleet, upgrading our fleet of vehicles and maybe just to piggyback on what Councilman Bates had brought up earlier about the use of multiple vehicles, so in a best practice, if the watch commander's vehicle in a shift gets tied up on something in the field, the next oncoming shift and watch commander can all get in their vehicles and we have no lapse in services to the community by having another set of vehicles for each of them. So we're close to meeting that goal as well. Specialty assignments, and as I've mentioned, SRO, motor, K-9, these are all things that we're moving towards, but obviously, you know, that's a luxury, we can't do any of that until we get up to full staffing, but we're not gonna wait until we get there. We have a plan in place that will help recruitment and retention by re-implementing some of these specialty assignments, giving officers things to look forward to rather than just working patrol in their careers. And then the last one, one of the bigger ones is obviously community engagement that we're attempting to tackle from day one of me being here and we're just scratching the surface. We will continue to do that, is my goal, to ensure that nobody will ever say that the Los Alamos Police Department is not engaged with the community here. So that is, will be an ever-evolving component of the police department. As far as our staffing goals that we're gonna be asking for, we had one CLO position that was reclassified into a full-time records clerk to try to get caught up on the records department. We have two part-time police aides that we can devote towards parking enforcement that will, the revenue that they'll generate will help offset some of the costs of their positions as well as assist the street sweeping. And we have one training coordinator position that we're gonna be implementing to try to enable us to get up to our full staffing and address our recruitment and retention issues.
I'm not saying a thing.
No, I got it.
Go ahead.
Question, Mayor?
Oh, just real quick, okay, because I've teased, yo, your street sweeping gal. What is the plan, well, because, have you seen it? I've watched it. She follows, like she sees the truck go by, but she cannot catch the people if they move their car. So what is your plan for, I gotta know this, I've been waiting to hear, how y'all gonna catch? I've run, I'm telling you now, send me a ticket if you need to, but Long Beach has a flawless system, I wanna know what y'all gonna do.
So the first thing we need to do is hire more parking control officers so that we can have them leapfrogging ahead to be able to catch the people and stay ahead of the truck. So that is the first goal, but I'm more than willing to listen to any ideas you think that Long Beach has since they have such a perfect system.
It's not perfect, it's just when they follow behind the truck.
Correct.
So as soon as the truck goes by, they snap a picture, run if you want to, the ticket comes in the mail, ask me how I know. And that's what I suggested to my friend, she was like, "Well, this was when I was still a Parks and Rec Commissioner, so I really had no idea all the things you had to go through." But that's one way that they absolutely can catch more people. I know Fran, she's so far behind the street sweeper, people have at least a five-minute head start to move their vehicle.
So when we talk about some of the goals moving into the future, that would be a technological upgrade that you would need to get approved for to be able to utilize that type of equipment, but it is very possible to do.
Okay.
Question?
Technology's a great force multiplier. It really is.
Chief, as far as I know, and certainly when I was on the council many years ago, we've always been very supportive of school resource officers on the campus at the high school. I'm wondering if you could just spend a minute or two for us, telling us, given the sad situation of school shootings, where we are right now with interface with the campuses, especially the high school, in terms of trying to, without saying anything that we don't want the bad guys to know, what are we doing right now to try to increase that level of school safety, you know, in our community?
So we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the, at the district office to address some of these concerns as well. Orange County Fire Authority has actually done an amazing job, so they have already started doing some cross-training with law enforcement as far as breach, breacher training, using some of the equipment that they have, and they have a trailer that they're bringing around to different station houses to allow, enable to teach law enforcement how to make entry into locations utilizing the halogen tool.
Oh, wow.
So we are gonna purchase those pieces of equipment to outfit every patrol car and with OCFA, they're gonna be bringing that piece of, that trailer here to the fire station in Los Alamos so that we ourselves, as well as the surrounding law enforcement agencies, can partake in that training to learn how to utilize that equipment. Secondly, they're in the, OCFA is also in the process of setting up an active shooter drill and we are gonna be going to the district tomorrow to ask a request to be able to have that drill at the high school, right? And then incorporate our partners on both sides of us as if it were real life, that's what would occur on that day. We would be working in tandem with them to ensure that we all get the same type of training. So OCFA has been doing an amazing job of partnering with us to address this type of incident. The UWASI Grant also offers a three-day active shooter course that I've made a priority to try to get every person within the law, within the police department to attend that three-day training so that we're all on the same page of what that response would look like. And it's a standardized training that they provide to every law enforcement agency in the county.
Great, thank you.
Can I take that a step further, just real quickly? One of the things that I truly appreciate about the chief is his willingness to reach out and involve other people and really try to take their opinions into account when formulating what a plan looks like. The SRO program is obviously near and dear to all of our hearts, it's important for all of us. The chief actually made it a priority to make sure that he was in conversation with the principal at the high school and involving her in the selection of the actual SRO when that actually does happen, so again, the, you know, a lot of people will pay, you know, credence to community engagement, but it also means that you are listening. but it also means that you are listening to what everybody is saying and taking that into account, and the chief obviously is a leader in that, so thank you, chief.
Thank you. And one thing that's not listed in here, because we haven't gone down that road yet, but Ron set up a meeting of contracting with a grant writer, so that we will be attempting to get the tobacco grant to offset the cost of the SRO for three years.
Very nice.
So.
Any other departments? I'm scared to say anything.
We're not hiding any more from you, I promise.
Are you sure? Okay, yeah, probably shouldn't have skipped over the police department. If we could just keep that faux pas, yeah. If we could just keep that faux pas among us girls and not out to the police department, that would be great. I drive a little bit fast. Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for interrupting, and it's perhaps a formality at this point, but I would ask that we open the public hearing, see if there's anyone who would like to provide a public comment, and then bring it back to the council.
Thank you. Yes, now that we have completed the presentations, I'll open it up to public comment. Anybody here?
I need to go to the mic.
Yep, you need to go to the mic, I'm sorry, yeah.
So I have a question, it's related to the real estate development throughout different parts of the city, and one of the ones that I haven't yet heard about is the very large parcel on Lamson, the West Ed and fishing game, I used to work there. So I know that that property went and sold and so on, and the business there, at least West Ed is rented and maybe no rent for them, but until the end of the year at least. So when the developer comes in, have we heard any plans at all on what is going to be going on that large parcel on Lamson? What's actually going to be happening? Is it residential, retail, open green space? Because that's like one of the largest parcels in our city, and that doesn't, I only found out about it because it came through on a news item that was in an obscure place, that the property went for sale, and then somebody bought it, but then we haven't really heard anything about that, but I know it impacts upon financial, all the tax revenue, and so on. So I wondered if any of you all would have anything to say about that.
I'll let our city manager respond to that one.
So I, this is what I can say, the property was sold, and the new owners, they are a development REIT, and they do focus primarily on housing. And so while we haven't received an official plan as to what exactly, or a submittal more aptly, that we can process yet, we are in conversations with the owners about what exactly their plans are, and it does sound like residential is their goal at the end of the day. So this is something that will unfold for the next couple of months, and when I say couple of months, I actually probably should say maybe five to six months, where they will actually do a formal submittal, and then once that has been submitted to us, then that kind of starts the public review of what actually will happen there. So it's a little premature for me to say what exactly their plans are, because they haven't officially submitted something, but just given the, I'll say it, all the indicators that they have put out in front of us, I do believe that residential will be the ultimate outcome for that site.
Yeah, because I know it's number of acres of land. It's one of the largest parcels in the city, so it's not like a small little section, and so I know there's going to be some impacts with Seal Beach across the street, College Park East, and so I would like to hear more of that. As the city gets more information about that, I think that would be really great to find out, because it's such a huge development.
Oh, of course. I think that, and this is something that we're actually looking at for a number of different areas in town, whenever we have developments that reach a certain scope and size, I think it's just good for everybody to know what's going on so that everyone, if you're so inclined, can come and voice an opinion about what exactly you think should be developed there. So yes, that will be a goal of ours, is to make sure that everybody knows and has an opportunity to speak about what exactly is going to be built.
Yeah, because I know in the local paper that we get, it's the News Enterprise, they talk about North Cotel. That's gotten a lot of that information about the mixed use and so on. Are there any plans for other parts of the city that are being considered for real estate development at this time?
Well, I think the city is open to any type, a lot of different types of development. The town center, obviously, here, very close to Los Alamos Cotella Boulevard, has just been rezoned for, or not rezoned, the general plan has been overlaid with a, with a mixed use zone for that area, so that does give it the opportunity to have retail and residential in the same area, and I think part of our strategic planning that we'll be going through in this next year is really talking about, are there different areas within the city that we can see developing in a different way? The goal here is to make sure that we have a well-thought-out plan, but also that we have the different, I guess, tools in the toolbox to be able to allow for those developments to happen, and we, at the moment, are, we're getting there, we don't have all of them yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I'll bring it back to council for any other questions or comments. All right, so can I get a motion and a second for adoption of the Resolution 2022-23, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, adopting the annual operating and capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2022-2023?
I will make a motion if I would have to repeat that.
Nope.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Onto our discussion item, city manager employment agreement, and I think I'm turning this over to our city attorney.
That is correct, thank you. Before the council for consideration tonight is a new city manager, excuse me, new city manager employment agreement. The city manager, or city manager Simmons was first appointed as the Los Alamos City Manager on January 21st, 2020, with unanimous approval by the city council of a three-year agreement. Following Mr. Simmons' most recent annual performance review, the mayor, acting as the city's designated representative, engaged in negotiations with Mr. Simmons over salary benefits and terms and conditions of his continued employment with the city. The proposed city manager agreement before you this evening has been prepared based on those negotiated terms and conditions for the city council's review this evening. The new city manager employment agreement, if approved, would be for a term of three years commencing on July 1st, 2022. I should point out there was, or is, rather, a minor clerical error in Section 3.2.1 term of the agreement that's in your agenda packet. There, it references the end of the term concluding in the year 20,225, which I would love to see it.
Yeah, I noticed that. Very good, I missed that.
You'll be here for London's graduation.
I missed that.
So that actually will be fixed in the event the council approves the agreement this evening. That should read 20,25. So I just wanted to point that out. The proposed executive compensation plan for the city manager is as follows. The city manager will be paid an annual base salary of $214,026, subject to an automatic 3% increase in contract year two, and an automatic 2% increase in contract year three, except as noted in my report this evening, the city manager will receive the same benefits provided to other executive management employees as set forth in the salary and benefit resolution, as may be amended, including without limitation, enrollment in the 2.7% at 55 PERS pension plan. The city manager will be responsible for paying the full employee share of the PERS retirement contribution. The city manager will be paid a one-time retention bonus totaling $5,000 upon the effective date of the agreement, with two additional $5,000 retention bonuses in contract years two and three. The city manager will accrue vacation leave at a rate of 178 hours annually, and the city will contribute up to $2,100 per month toward the payment of premiums for health, dental, and optical insurance. Alternatively, the city manager may elect to receive a monthly payment equal to this amount in lieu of his participation in the city's medical, optical, and dental insurance program. Further, under the terms of the proposed agreement, the city will provide the city manager with the city leased or owned vehicle for his exclusive use. The city will also contribute $700 per month toward the city manager's participation in a city-approved deferred compensation plan, and the city manager will be provided a city-issued cellular phone, or at his election, he may opt to receive a $70 monthly stipend for use of his own cellular phone for city business. Additionally, the city will provide the city manager with a monthly stipend of $55 for a wireless hotspot. Lastly, under the terms of the proposed agreement, the city will also provide the city manager with a one-time cash distribution totaling $5,000. And with that, I conclude my oral summary of the proposed agreement. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to provide you with a response.
Do we have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't have a question, I do have a. I have a comment, though, that with someone has an HR background, when you have someone that is, came on board during the pandemic, and all the programs, all the things that you see happening, all of our department heads, we've lost not one. We have not lost any of our staff. That is a testament to leadership. We found the most amazing chief, we got a unicorn, or leprechaun, whichever you prefer, that we got under his watch, and I'm sorry, that needs to be acknowledged and is, as much within our power, rewarded. So I am full force behind everything that you said, and I wish we could do more.
I'll make a motion.
I'll go ahead and echo that.
I'm going to be nice to you one time, so listen.
Write it down.
Yeah, please record it. So as Tanya was saying, you know, you came in right before COVID started, and you were still getting your feet wet, and then we threw a national, or global pandemic on you, and without a hitch, you dug in and just created programs and worked with other agencies and are able to keep us operating and functional. You were instrumental in getting measured bypasses and ccs. So for the first time that I'm aware of, we haven't talked about a deficit, we're actually able to spend money on streets and parks, and it's, makes budget season a lot more fun. You were able to negotiate employment group contracts for all of our represented employees and unrepresented employees. You made it through a successful negotiation with the trash contract that we did not make the front page of the paper. We were very excited about that. You revamped most of the city as far as personnel, creating a deputy city manager, and just did a lot of good personnel changes that just people are working in their wheelhouses now. And the city recognizes it, the residents recognize it, and the businesses recognize it. And on that note, can I get a motion?
He motioned, I seconded, that was just.
Oh, okay, geez. All right, so we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And with that, I think we are adjourned.
Hey!
All right, thank you very much.